Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a few corrections to the agenda this evening. I am aware from speaking to a few members of council in advance of this meeting that there are some of you who may be offering amendments or who may be splitting certain motions that will appear under new business. I will let you do that when we reach that particular action item. I do want to remove from the discussion portion of the agenda the Environmental Commission's recommendation to city council regarding medium rain gardens. I think Mr. Rhodes is really the only council member who can talk at length on that issue since it came from the Environmental Commission and since he's the council liaison. Unfortunately, he is feeling under the weather and will not be able to be here tonight. So we will add that as a discussion item at our next council meeting in two weeks. In addition to that, there were two things placed at your seats this evening. The first is a memorandum that at the top in bold and its underline says memorandum of understanding. And you'll see two highlighted sections, one in section B and one in section four, some additional verbiage that's been added. I'm sure Mr. Campo will talk about that when we reach that particular item on the agenda this evening. And second, on a legal-sized piece of paper is a rendering that relates to new business item 14-239, Celine Ventures. We did receive permission from Celine Ventures to provide this to you this evening. This is a rendering and a proposal, I want to emphasize proposal, of what their development would look like if it were developed and brought into the city of Celine. And obviously, that's very fluid and nothing's written in stone, but we did want to provide that to you for reference at the developer's request. With that, again, council members Rhodes and Saibo will not be with us this evening. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, city superintendent engineer Ruble, DPW director Fordyce, business ambassador Korfman, Parks and Rec director Scruggs is not with us this evening. I would seek a motion at this time to approve the agenda as amended unless there are additional amendments.
Move to approve as amended.
Okay, we'll let Roth be the mover and Mayor Protam Tahar be the second. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the absences of councilwoman Saibo Koenig and councilmember Rhodes.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth. All those in favor of excusing the absence of our two colleagues signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the presentation portion of the agenda this evening. The first is Deleep Mullik and Rick Mullik from Mullik Foundation who are here to present the city with, well, something that we greatly appreciate and will greatly value. So I'll let these two gentlemen come forward at this time. Chase, do we have the, can I have the cordless mic turned on?
Oh, it's on.
Okay. What's all you?
Wonderful. Well, we're here tonight to make a contribution, a donation from the Mullik Foundation to the city of Celine for the purpose of automatic external defibrillators. And the purpose of that was brought to us by Mr. Todd Campbell and the police chief. And we like to make a contribution to the city of Celine. This is our second one for our second continuous year, and we hope to continue to do so in the future. And, you know, we appreciate Mr. Campbell and the police chief bringing this to our attention, and, you know, we like to help out in any way we can. So I'll present the check.
Absolutely. Thank you kindly. Very good. I think our friends from the press corps would like to get some pictures here. Deleep, you want to get this picture as well? I'm going to have you both take a hold of that. Good? One more? Thank you. Thanks very much.
If I could.
Now, why don't you stay after for just a second?
Just real quick, thank you very much to Deleep and Rick and the Mullik Foundation. You may recall last year, the Mullik Foundation stepped up. We needed new in-car video cameras in our vehicles, and they stepped to the plate, stepped up to the plate for a little over $32,000. And so, very community-oriented, and we're grateful for having them, not only as a foundation in our community, but also as a company in our community. And I was very thankful for that. And just wanted to, if Chase, can you zoom that in, please? This is what the AEDs will look like. We tried to actually get a physical one to borrow one to show, but this is as close as we can get. So chief, if you want to walk through that.
Chief is our first aid, lead first aid guy.
Well, I am a CPR and AED instructor, and when this came about, I was excited about the idea of brand-new AEDs because we have three of them in the police department. Two of them don't work, and the third one, we're not quite sure of. And in a cardiac emergency, you absolutely want one of these to work. So these are the latest, most technologically advanced AEDs, to the point where if you see the little blue button on there, I don't know if I can, yeah, I guess I can point to it. If you push that, you forgot everything you ever learned about CPR, it will walk you right through it. So, thank you. This is a great thing for the police department, great thing for the city, great thing for our community. So thank you.
I'll just be very brief, gentlemen. The fact that we had antiquated, I think for lack of a better way to articulate it, equipment was simply unacceptable to me, and it should be unacceptable to our citizens. And it's actually something I spoke to the chief about several months ago. And I think I speak for, well, all of my colleagues on city council, but also for the entire city of Celine, by saying that we are eternally grateful for this contribution. You have been successful in business. I know you've been successful in life, and you continue to demonstrate your generosity and kindness by supporting others and supporting the Celine Police Department. And we talk at length here at the city of Celine of how fundamental and how paramount public safety it is. It is absolutely critical. And one of the reasons why this community is so special and unique is because of our police department, because of our fire department, because of our first responders, and they're successful because of people like you. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and we wish you, of course, the best in all your future endeavors. And again, we're eternally grateful. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you. Okay, actually, we need that screen down, Chase. Well, thank you again to Deleep and Rick, and we'll move on now to the second presentation this evening, which is the E-Cities Best Practice Award. Actually, Ms. Korfman, if you don't mind, let's run the video first, and then we can showcase the actual physical awards, if that's okay with you. And I should note that this video was prepared by E-Cities as well as University of Michigan Dearborn. It's a great video. I think it's been featured on the Celine Post, maybe the Reporter as well. I think it's available on our website, is it not?
It's supposed to be.
Supposed to be. If it's not currently, it will be. It's a great video that features some testimonials, but I'll let the video speak for itself. So, Ms. Korfman, whenever you're ready.
One of the things that we do in Celine to support the business community that I think is fundamental and critical is that we communicate and interact and engage with them on a consistent, thorough, and routine basis.
I wish that every government that I dealt with, you know, particularly at the federal level, was as responsive as our local government is here in Celine.
The city of Celine is very welcoming and very encouraging to businesses of all shapes and sizes. And if you have a question or concern, you need to develop a relationship, reach out to us, call us, email us. That's what we're here for. We're a community that really embraces entrepreneurship and small business development.
If I have a problem, I just call over to City Hall, and I find the right person, and they call me back, or they come here and visit us.
We started a task force, again, made up of legal counsel, city staff, council members, but most importantly, members of the business community, to go through our entire ordinance book, every regulation, every policy, to modernize it, but also to identify regulations that may be too onerous and restrictive on businesses.
It's been a wonderful cooperation, partnership with the city to be able to help us in reducing some of the costs to stay competitive worldwide.
I knew the Celine area because I had moved about 10 years previously to Celine, actually Lodi Township, with my family. And so I had known downtown Celine and what it was about, and it seemed like a really good place. We were looking around, and one day, some actually business ambassadors from Celine came to see our company and said, hey, have you considered moving it to downtown Celine? The city actually helped us find our facility, which is this amazing old school. They also came through with a number of incentive packages as far as the taxes went, and to try to help us move in here and make sure that, you know, we weren't immediately slammed with all sorts of crazy taxes.
The city of Celine has been cited on numerous occasions by CNN and Money Magazine as one of the best small towns in the United States, and we're very proud of that.
The nice thing about Celine is it is, it's an affordable place to live. So even some of our production staff have moved here from as far away as Detroit.
One of the reasons we relocated to Celine is because of the quality of life. All the folks that work here, a lot of the folks are young, they're getting married, they're starting families, and school systems make a big impact. Certainly, I've got small kids, and schools make a huge impact on us. And so, we want to live in a place where, you know, it's a safe community, a clean community, a place where the schools are good, and where the cost of living is relatively low.
We grew from that 20 headcount to 200, and that was, has been a lot of growth. So to be able to have that talent here locally has been rewarding.
Anybody who has spent some amount of time in our community will find that from a business perspective, we embrace entrepreneurs and we embrace small business investment. And we will go the extra mile. We will work with you to create jobs and bring a business to Celine or grow your business in Celine. We're a community that embraces investment in businesses of all shapes and sizes, and I truly believe this is a great place to start your business.
Ms. Korfman, do you want to talk a little bit about, maybe briefly, about the criteria for the award and then the luncheon that you attended along with city manager Campbell a couple of weeks ago, where these awards were presented?
The E-Cities is through U of M Dearborn iLabs. It's an annual research study that examines the community-level factors that influence entrepreneurship, economic development, and job growth. The first part of the study provides participating communities with benchmarking reports that show how their performance is doing at creating inviting business environments and encouraging entrepreneur growth. Each community receives stars based on how well they perform, with five stars being the highest. And this portion of the study, the city of Celine received four stars this year. The second part of the survey looks at the best practices and provides an opportunity for the city of Celine to share our story with entrepreneurs. We submitted responses to questions that promoted us to highlight the key strategies, resources, and assets that promote our community, and each response was then reviewed by a panel of entrepreneurs. Communities that were highlighted as best practices are communities that the panel of entrepreneurs found had concise, compelling, unique, and relevant messages. And this year, the city of Celine was chosen as a best practice community. And we received two awards at a luncheon on November 13th. And in addition to that, E-Cities created our marketing video that they presented at the luncheon and that we also can promote in our community.
And if I'm not mistaken, both of these awards, are they available up at the front counter for the public to view?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Well, you know, I don't know if you have anything further to add, Mr. Korfman or Mr. Campbell, but it's a great distinction, a great honor, you know. We, of course, knew that we were a community that embraced small business development, entrepreneurship. We just want to make sure that the rest of the world, especially southeastern Michigan, knows that this is a welcoming and inviting place. And the only disappointment is that we didn't get five stars, but we're going back for 2016. So, again, a great, great distinction, and we're very, very honored.
I understand, very quickly, as the mayor stated, Celine has a long history, a long history of being a solid supporter of all businesses, of partners. Again, as you heard, the lobby heard me say that's one of the things that helps Celine be the special place it is, because of all the partnerships. And one of those partnerships are with our business community. Two years ago, I believe it was, we had employed a banner spark to help put together an economic development strategy for us. And while you've seen the little book, it's little and statute, it's great information, great strategy. And then, one of the suggestions in the strategy was to introduce the business ambassador position that we've done. And I think this is, we're trying to take this long, strong history of business support and build it, take it to the next levels and forward. So Kathy is continuing in her role, and we're, I mean, this is kind of the fruits of the labor, if you will. So, thank you to Kathy and the city council for setting the policy, setting the bar. Thank you to our staff, our support staff, our departments that continue to help us provide that support, to help continue to provide that support to our businesses to help them grow. So, thank you, great job. And just keep setting the bar higher to the expectation to hire and get that. That's all right.
Let's, actually, that's a good point. Let's give Ms. Korfman a round of applause, because she does. I'd like to thank the folks from Celine Electronics, Quantum Signal, and MMI for agreeing to do testimonials and interview. They did excellent job. Real quick, yeah. Good. Want to get some pictures done? Okay, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, Celine resident since 1955. I noticed on your agenda, it said bonding for pension liability, yet there is no amount. I think as far as being open to the public and the taxpayers, that amount, I heard at the work meeting somewhere between 7.3 million and 11 million. Then there also is another agenda item where they're tying 14-238 on the bonding without, this is all without a vote of the people, of course. And you have not inserted 3,200,000. I think it's very important that all agenda items, when they have an amount, that they be addressed, because this is fact. The other thing as far as Celine Ventures, as far as 117 acres possibly wanting to have water and sewer, to me, they annex. We have a brand-new water tower that the taxpayers have paid. The only reason that Celine is wanted is because our water and sewer. And they definitely should come in and pay with the other great taxpayers that get to pay for years and years. Please put the amount of money that you're talking about.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? No, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Gierba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-235. This is automatic external defibrillators. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 19th, 2014, from police chief Rennick, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of nine automatic external defibrillators and four mounting cabinets at a not-to-exceed cost of $10,435. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'll let Mr. Roth be the second on that. We'll get you next time, Mr. Gierba. Chief Rennick, please.
Well, as you saw just a few minutes ago with the donation that was given to the city, I was tasked with the finding AEDs for the city and/or the police department, and we were able to find the rugged ones, so in case they fall, they don't break. These have all the new programming in them. These AEDs will be placed in the police cars, so there will be three of them for the police cars. There is also one for the police department. There is going to be one in City Hall. There will be three in the rec center, and one at the DPW.
Very good. Are there any questions for the chief, Mr. Burgoyne?
What was the amount of the donation from the Mullik Foundation?
What is the amount?
Yeah, there was a check. We didn't.
I gotta go get it.
Please go get the check, yeah. It's approximately that amount, I believe.
My understanding is that on donations and grants, that the city should, the city council should make, receive those? Because in some cases, you might not want to receive certain amounts, or you might not want certain grants. So I would offer a motion to add to this agenda item whatever.
What's the amount, chief Rennick?
The amount is $10,557.
Okay. So do you want to, so we insert a semicolon after the $10,435 amount and say what exactly, Mr. Burgoyne?
And to accept
Okay.
the check from Mullik Foundation in the amount of 10,000, whatever it was.
557.
557 to cover these costs. So in the same motion, we're spending it and we're receiving it?
I have, and to accept a check from the Mullik Foundation in the amount of $10,557 to cover these expenses. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Tahar and Mr. Roth, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we'll just insert it then without objection as an addendum to the motion. Are there any questions for the chief? Mr. Gierba.
How will we maintain, are these going to be maintained so that we know that they're always going to be in working condition? Is there a maintenance agreement or something, or how will they be?
There is not a maintenance agreement. They are self-contained. There's nothing that we do to them. You check the window, that shows an X. If the X is there, they're operating. The batteries are guaranteed to last for five years without replacement. Really, we shouldn't have to touch them except for an emergency within a five-year period.
Good. Thanks.
Mr. Burgoyne.
Can the batteries be replaced?
Yes, they can.
Anything else? Ms. Tahar.
Just to note something that is in the memo but might be of interest to the public is that at all of the locations where these will be, there are also personnel who are trained in their use.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot to mention. We recently, the police department was completely trained, and we've got probably at least 80% of City Hall, and then in January, we're going to recertify all the DPW as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Well, again, let me just state that we appreciate the generosity of the Mullik Foundation, Deleep and Rick specifically. This is a, this is a good thing. Again, as I stated earlier, it's simply unacceptable that we did not have this technology, or at least modern working technology at the rec center here at City Hall and in our police cars. And I should note from talking to officers and personnel that the equipment that we had in the past when it was working, it has saved lives. That's not hyperbole, that's not an exaggeration. It's saved lives in this community, and I suspect that the new equipment will save lives in the future. So, again, this is a great thing, a positive step in the right direction, and I enthusiastically support the motion. And thank you for your work on this, chief.
You're welcome. Just one more question. I just want to make sure, included within this is trading in our old, inoperable ones so we can, so is that part of the motion as well, that we can do that?
It's not, it's not currently part of the motion.
I guess I would ask that that would be it as well, because by allowing us to trade in the old ones, that's what's actually going to be able to help us to buy the cabinets.
Okay, and so then an additional semicolon dash or comma after expenses, and to allow the police department to exchange the old?
The old, we have five AEDs, to trade them in.
And to trade in the antiquated or the outdated five AED machines?
Instruments.
Instruments.
I mean, it's part of the bid anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't know that it needs to be in the motion, chief, but if somebody would like to add that in the motion?
You could also put the word net before 10,435. It'd pretty much do the same thing. Net 10,000, because net of trade-in, you could put that.
That's actually a good suggestion. Ms. Tahar and Mr. Roth, would you be comfortable with just inserting the word net?
Sure.
You're okay with that? You're okay? You're clear on that? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Everyone's comfortable with the motion? Then a couple of changes. Okay. That's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Roth, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-236, emergency shelter agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 26, 2014, from Parks and Rec director Scruggs, excuse me, and to approve or not to approve the emergency shelter agreement and to authorize or not authorize the city manager, city manager Campbell, excuse me, to sign upon review and approval by the city attorney. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
To approve and, to approve or to approve and authorize, Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? I'll second for discussion. In the absence of Ms. Scruggs, Mr. Campbell is prepared to discuss her memo and entertain any questions you may have. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Ms. Scruggs' memo reflects, we were approached by Celine Area Schools to enter into this emergency shelter agreement that's reciprocal, meaning that if for some reason there was emergency, emergency shelter was needed for the Celine High School students, faculty and folks, and/or Harvest Elementary School, that they would be able to be allowed to come to the rec center. And reciprocally, if our folks at the rec center needed emergency shelter, that they would be able to go to Celine High School and/or Harvest Elementary School for Safe Haven.
Any questions for city manager Campbell? Mr. Gierba, please.
Could you explain kind of how this is going to work? Because that building's almost a mile from the schools, and just curious how people would be either transported there or expectation to run or what? I just, this kind of has a whole lot of questions I don't understand.
Sure. Well, what I would say is, and this isn't unique, I can give you an example. In a community that I served in, we had a high-rise subsidized apartment building that caught fire, and everybody had to be vacated for quite some time. But we had these emergency shelters, and actually, one of them about, maybe not a mile, maybe three-quarters of a mile away, was our community center, which also served as one of these emergency shelters. And they were bussed or taken by family members or the like. I don't, we had not, when I spoke with Ms. Scruggs, we did not talk about the transportation aspect. So I would be making some assumptions, whether it be through bussing, through our van, if you will.
I have just concerns from the perspective of, I mean, it's fine, we can do this for this building and everything, but it's that issue of potentially somebody running there and we don't have the staffing there or whatever at this emergency to make sure that whoever's coming knows there's somebody there to handle this type of situation and everything. So we'd need to know, understand for ourselves what the protocol.
Oh, certainly, certainly. The protocol absolutely would be they would notify us or we would notify them, and the proper steps would be taken, the proper preparations would be made for either us to host them or them to host us.
Mr. Gierba, if you wish, and again, it's totally your prerogative, but I believe Ms. Scruggs can be present at our next council meeting, which will take place, of course, in two weeks. If you were so inclined, the chair would entertain a motion to table this action item 14-236 to our next meeting, which will be on December the 16th, no, excuse me, December the 15th.
I think that's best, so we have the rest of council here. It seemed like we had a little hesitation of people supporting it.
Okay. So, and that will be a superseding motion to the one that's currently been offered, but I'm very comfortable with that. Mr. Roth, would you have any objections to that?
No problem.
Okay. So Mr. Gierba is going to offer a motion that we table new business item 14-236 to our next city council meeting on December the 15th, and that will appear as unfinished business, of course. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Burgoyne? I need a second first. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
You second that? Okay. Okay. So Mr. Gierba has moved, um, to table, seconded by Mr. Roth. Mr. Burgoyne?
I was hoping, um, that you wouldn't make the second, because there's no debate after the second. I, I wanted to bring up some issues. Um, I, I do understand, in the case of flooding, for example, somebody's domicile and they need emergency shelter, uh, but I don't understand how, even if the schools were flooded or something happened at the school, how...
Okay.
...emergency shelter is needed. Emergency shelter is usually, some, someone's home is incapacitated or something like that, or there's no electricity during the winter and the pipes freeze, or... I, I don't understand how, what kind of emergency shelter we are, we're even talking about.
Okay. Um, and those issues are perfectly legitimate, Mr. Burgoyne, and hopefully Ms. Scruggs can comment on those, um, at our next meeting. Um, Mr., you'd like to call the question, so if there, um, let me first ask, I don't think there's any subsequent, uh, dialogue anyways. No, there isn't. Okay. So we'll proceed to vote. Um, it's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Roth, to table this motion to our next meeting on December 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. So that'll appear under unfinished business at our next meeting in two weeks. We move on to new business item 14-237. This is 2015 city council meeting dates. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November the 7th, 2014, from Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve the 2015 city council meeting dates as submitted.
So moved.
To approve, Mr. Gierba?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahar. I'm assuming you don't have any comment. It's pretty self-explanatory. Is there any discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-238. This is State Revolving Fund Resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated November 25th, 2014, from Treasurer Bennett, to adopt or not to adopt the resolution to purchase, acquire, and construct improvements to the sanitary sewer system, and to publish notice of intent to issue revenue bonds.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay.
Um, I...
Let me get this real quick, Mr. Burgoyne. So it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Gierba, to adopt. Mr. Burgoyne, do you have a comment? I think you wanna add some additional verbiage.
Yeah, I, I, um, did request, uh, to have an amount in the motion, and I thought the treasurer had come up with an amount.
It's in the memorandum. Do you wanna come up to the podium, Ms. Bennett? So we could simply add, or you could recommend that we add. Do you wanna state the amount?
It's not to exceed, if you look at the resolution, it says that it is not to exceed the 3.2. Um, let's see, where is it at?
3.2 million, right?
Right, on the very bottom, under, um, the number one on the first page is the 3.2. And just for clarification, this is, um, as we talked about at our last work meeting, this is a, a result of back when Tetra Tech had did its, um, study on our wastewater treatment plant. They had found that there were some immediate needs, which as you may recall, we were in the, in the wrap-up phases of that Phase One of our wa, water, wastewater treatment plant. And then they found some other, um, items that were not immediate needs, and we, um, applied for and have been notified that we've received, um, this State Revolving Fund loan, and what we do on that is we issue bonds at the state's lower interest rates. And so this is the intent to go ahead and, um, pursue with that step at the low, at the low-interest rate bonding through the state of Michigan Revolving Fund.
Okay. Let me go back to Mr. Burgoyne. Um, so, Mr. Burgoyne, here's what I've come up with, and, and you can reject this and, uh, modify it if you, if you feel that's appropriate. So I have the motion reading as it's stated, and then after issuing revenue bonds, I have a comma in the amount not to exceed 3.2 million.
Perfect.
Okay?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that, Mr. Gierba, Ms. Tahar?
Yes.
I'm assuming you're fine with that? Excellent. Okay. So that will be added to the motion without objection. Um, the only other thing I would state, because there appears to be a little bit of confusion, I apologize for that. This issue is in no way related to the bonding that we discussed at our work meeting tonight. That was related, that related specifically to our pension liability, and that will come back for subsequent discussion and action at a future meeting. So I just wanna make that clear.
Correct.
Do you have any further comments? No? Are there questions for Ms. Bennett? Any discussion, then? Perfect. Well, then we'll proceed to vote with the additional verbiage. Um, it's been properly moved, then, and seconded by Gierba. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-238. This is Seline Ventures. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated, uh, November the 25th, 2014, from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the agreement between the City of Seline and Seline Ventures for the city to construct Phase One, or conduct, excuse me, not construct, Phase One of the utility study with Seline Ventures, paying the, the total cost for the study.
Motion to acknowledge receipt.
Okay. Motion then to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated, um, November 25th, 2014, from City Manager Campbell. Do you wanna stop at the semi-colon?
Yes, we can do a Part B.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Been properly moved by Burgoyne, or seconded by Gierba, to acknowledge receipt. I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell to, uh, talk about his memo, and then we can open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as my memo states, um, Seline Ventures, um, is interested in developing, um, approximately 117 acres, uh, that, uh, that they currently own. Um, and, and also, by the way, Bill Anderson is here representing, um, uh, Seline Ventures for any, any questions, comments. Um, but in any case, uh, they would like to, uh, develop 117 acres that is adjacent, immediately adjacent on the western end, on the north side of Michigan Ave to Austin Commons, uh, that is in the city. And you all may recall that the, the city has a longstanding policy that, uh, any development that, that, uh, would like city utilities, water and sewer, that they need to be annexed into the city. Uh, and that is certainly no, there, that, that policy is not wavering, um, for this, uh, wavering from that, uh, for this project. Um, however, uh, one of the discussions, and this discussion was, was brought up, not with Seline Ventures, but with, with former development, uh, you know, s, eight, nine years ago, that, um, before the world fell apart, that, um, we needed to do a utility study to determine exactly what, um, what any of this future development would require as far as water and sewer, um, as far as capacities and such at our current, uh, wastewater treatment plant, or water treatment plant, uh, to, to, to maintain pressures for water and the like. And so, um, what, uh, Seline Ventures has asked is that they wanna kinda bite this off, um, one bite at a time, if you will. They, they wanna determine, um, the wastewater capacities and any issues in that, and what, uh, what improvements would, would be required and what that cost would be. Um, and then if, uh, again, and they are paying 100% of this cost, uh, for this study, approximately $27,000 plus, uh, 10% uh, um, admin, uh, from city staff, uh, for that. Um, but in any case, um, if they are so inclined to go forward, if they see that it's favorable for them, then they would, they would, um, move forward requesting the city to conduct the second half, which would be the water utility study. Um, so, having said that, uh, the, the agreement you have before you, um, is just that, it's a, it's actually a memorandum of understanding between the city and, um, uh, Seline Ventures to have the city go forward with Tetra Tech, uh, which also, I also included in your packet, uh, their proposal to conduct those studies and what those points would be. Um, and so, um, staff is recommending the approval of this, this memorandum, memorandum of understanding to move this forward, and I know Seline Ventures wants to move forward quickly to see what's going on. It's gonna take about six weeks, uh, to complete this. So I'm happy to, to try and answer any questions, and also Gary Rubel is here as well to help.
Questions from city council? Mr. Burgoyne?
Well, um, certainly, um, I agree with the idea that if our capacity is full and we annex additional, um, residential development, then in the urban development area, that has to pay its way forward in some way. What I'm concerned about is us going very slowly on this, because it's beneficial to both parties to move forward. It's beneficial to us to move forward, and it's beneficial to Seline Ventures to move forward. Seline Ventures is not the only participant. Uh, there, there have been other developers that are, um, interested, and, um, so I think that the city council needs a better understanding overall, not just on the sewer side, but, um, I'm wondering if any member of the city council knows whether, on our water and sewer side, both, whether our current master plan would completely use that up, use up our capacity. I wonder if the members of the city council know right now what the urban development area, the entire UDA, I guess it's called, uh, would provide as, as an impact. And so it seems as though we're having a knee-jerk response to things coming before us, rather than us having a synoptic view, having an overview and understanding, a better understanding of where we are. Maybe somebody knows this, but I, I don't know all, all the facts on this. What I would prefer to see is I would prefer to understand the entire development area, I, to understand what our circumstance is right now, and how our master plan would fill out what we have right now. Do we have any slack capacity or not? And how do we relate to the next people that, that come up? I, I'd like us to walk through that somehow, rather than just doing it piecemeal and doing it very slowly, because it's in our, it's in the best interest of the city to do all of it, to look at all of it, to have an understanding of all of it. And I'm not sure whether we should require one developer to put up all the money for this. I, I'd rather that they only put up half of the money for the sewer and half of the money for water, and do both right now, and then later on, as more developers share in that cost, they probably would even get money back from that. But I think the most important thing is for us not to delay. So I, I see this as going too slowly.
Well, let me make a few comments, and then unfortunately, I have to relinquish the chair, because I have a longstanding obligation in Ann Arbor, so Mayor Protem Tahar will be, be taking over, and I apologize. Um, I, I think if the goal is to move forward expeditiously, which is, is my goal, then I think logic would dictate that the members would support this, this, this particular motion, um, to engage with Tetra Tech to study sewer capacity, uh, at the proposed development site. And again, city staff and I are responding to the petitioner's request. This is what the petitioner has asked, um, to, to, asked of us. Um, I am happy to, to work with staff and to accommodate, um, city council members and their, um, their, their particular needs, or, or questions and concerns regarding this issue specifically, or the larger issues related to, to development and annexation. And I think that sort of dialogue and conversation would be most conducive, uh, at an upcoming work meeting, which I'm, I'm happy to schedule. The other thing that I need to state, which I thought had been articulated, um, clearly and succinctly over the last several years, is that within our current system, we have capacity to accommodate those vacant lots, um, that currently exist within our corporate boundaries. Um, so I, I just wanna make that clear, 'cause there appears to be a little bit of confusion on that, and, and for that, I, I apologize. So again, I, I apologize that, uh, we're doing a lot of apologizing, um, I, that I need to, uh, to attend to this, uh, other obligation that I have in Ann Arbor, and I'm gonna relinquish the chair to, to Ms. Tahar. I look forward to hearing more about your subsequent discussion. Um, I hope that we can move forward on this. Um, and again, if council members would like to have a dialogue and, uh, discuss, um, from a more holistic perspective, annexation and development on our western border, I'm, I'm happy to accommodate that. So Ms. Tahar, wouldn't mind?
Mr. Gierba?
Um, I know we've talked about the concern about what the capacity is of our system now, but the idea of what we potentially have for this urban development area, at the time when Biltmore was proposing it, I'm understanding they had some information, but that was such a huge project that there was no way our current system would ever be able to handle that. It's almost to the point where we'd almost have to build another sewer treatment plant. I don't wanna stop this potential development, which our goal was to begin to grow our boundaries if this can come forward, and I'd rather deal like we did with Huntington Woods, where this property was part of a 425, but ultimately came into us after a period of time, because we are the one that's ultimately gonna be responsible for it. As to having the developer pay for this, I think that's the one who needs to be doing and speculating, not the city. The city already has done what its due diligence is currently on our facility. We've looked at it, we've repaired items, we're trying to address how to handle and be more efficient with what we currently have. But I think if we wanna move forward and try and get our revenue base or our tax base growing, um, the approach that we're taking right now is the one that's most economical and beneficial for the city, and doesn't necessarily put us out into a whole delay for, which could be multiple years before we got a study back on the whole urban development area.
Mr. Roth, did you have a comment?
No comment.
Okay. Um, well, I would add, uh, from my point of view, I, I don't see that the two are actually mutually exclusive. Um, I, I'm always in favor of taking a big-picture view, um, but I think stepping back and taking the big-picture view at this point would put, would create a huge barrier for, um, the current project proposal. So, um, I would not see a conflict in both approving this particular memorandum of understanding, going ahead with the study as described, as well as saying down the road, uh, we would look at, um, take a step back and look at the big picture, um, for this, for the whole urban development area. Yes? Mr. Burgoyne?
Um, I, what I understand that this proposal would do, only on the sewer side, would be to look at the capacity of the plant, to look at the capacity of the west belt, and to ta, take a look at, um, our current fill-ins in our current master plan, plus this Seline, this new Seline Ventures development, and to, um, determine, um, if, um, there would be additional need to, to expand. I don't, I agree with both of the previous speakers that we should not delay. I 100% agree we should not delay. Um, I don't agree that we should do it piecemeal, though. I think we should look at both water and sewer right away. I don't agree with Mayor, before he left, that our current facilities exactly match our master plan. I don't think that's been proved. I think maybe that's been guessed, but I don't know that it's been proved. I would like to take the guessing out of this. So by, by this contract, the sewer side guessing on our current master plan plus Seline Ventures will be taken out. There would be no more guessing on our current master plan fill-out plus Seline Ventures. But I also think we need to look overall at, at the larger picture. Certainly, um, possibly Seline Ventures won't be a tipping point, maybe, maybe these 117 acres, whatever they are, uh, maybe that would only need a very incremental change, like making one lagoon bigger or something like that. But it certainly does not give us the best path for the development area. We need to understand the development area and what that will do to us. We need to understand it both on sewer and on water. So what I'm saying, I'm agreeing with you that we should not delay, but I don't think we should delay the water side either. I don't think we should put that off. And I, I don't see necessarily that one individual builder will be carrying 100% of the cost. I think it's gonna be shared.
If I may. Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem. Um, just a, a couple things, as, as, um, in the Tetra Tech study, um, it, it does mention about some efficiencies, and partly, part of that is in 2007, they did a capacity study of our wastewater, um, and, and they will be utilizing that to, to update, um, that to update the entire, what's available within the corporate limits, if you will. Some developments that were going to be here aren't here, some that weren't thought of at the time are now underway. So we will see what the capacity is as part of that. And then there's also, the other item I wanted to mention is that in the MOU, there is language that says the city will work to, for future developers that do show up, that the city would work to have the current developer, Celine Ventures, essentially paid back the proper proportion of that. So just a couple of notes.
Any other comments? Mr. Burgoyne.
Yes. So in other words, in the development area, there's this amount of acreage and some other And the development relating to the entire area will be a larger cost, the development planning for the entire area will be a larger cost than just this $27,000 or whatever this is. There was one amount for sewer, which I think is about $27,000, and there was another amount for water, which is about $25,000, just for this area. But it seems to me that, and I don't want to delay this portion, but I do think it's important to continue and to look at the overall development area. And we have millions of dollars in our sewer and water available to do a study for tens of thousands of dollars, which could be a cost set out there that Celine Ventures plus others would share as part of the development. I don't think it's right that the first person that comes up does not share in the entire amount for the entire area.
So to clarify, do you see this as a barrier to approving the memorandum of understanding tonight?
I think this memorandum of understanding should be approved, but we should also approve the water portion, and I don't see why they need to pay 100% upfront.
Okay. Well, we have this memorandum of understanding in front of us at this time.
Which I hopefully would want to modify. If we issued a request for the engineers to complete the entire $50,000 worth and only charge them $25,000 upfront, that's what I would want because that's our best interest. In their best interest, they're just an individual. They don't want to put out a lot of money. We relate to the entire area. We should put out the right amount of money, do it correctly, do it upfront correctly.
Mr. Roth.
I've been listening to Mr. Burgoyne's statements, and I have a big problem. Right now, the only model land considered to be annexed is by this developer. The rest of the stuff is speculation. So if we knew all the other land that was going to be annexed, then we could do such a study. We can make some projections far as a long-range plan with the scenario that this may be annexed. I think that we need to move on and address the Celine Ventures for what they're trying to do, and it's just this 117 acres that we're addressing this evening. And I think they should share the cost as they're willing to do. At 100%. I don't think the city should put any money in speculation for the future unless we know exactly what is going to be annexed. We're wasting on it. We need to know what our capacity is so we can go from there, that anything else annexed, that's fine. So we should know our capacity, but this may give us it, and so we reap some of the benefit. So I think we should, all we're doing now is acknowledging, we're doing a lot of discussions, so I'd like to proceed to vote on this and also proceed to address the motion on the agenda.
Are you calling the question?
Yes.
Okay. The question has been called. It has been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt of the memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have a potential Part B for the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreement between the City of Celine and Celine Ventures for the city to conduct Phase 1 of the utility study with Celine Ventures paying for the total cost of the study.
A second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Girbauch, seconded by Roth, to approve. Discussion. Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, Mr. Roth incorrectly used the words "waste" when he said that, when we planned for undeveloped parcels, which we did in the master plan, we have, the way that we do planning for water and sewer is the engineers look at the type of use, whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, and they assign values that they expect for it. And that was done at one time in our master plan area, but it's not up to date, in my knowledge, and it's not correct, and it's not fully known right now because of changes over time. I understand that for the sewer part, the master plan portion will be reviewed to see what will be absorbed by those areas that are not yet built according to projected uses. And in the development area, which is currently outside our boundary, it is not difficult for the engineers to look at that projected use and provide a projected demand. And the reason that's important is if you don't know what you're doing, you don't know how to expand the plants. It's better to know than not to know. And we paid for the past projections within the master plan area, and that was not a waste. That was okay. You have to look and figure out what you're doing. I think we should figure out what we're doing on the water side also in the development area, and we should know what we're doing. It's better to know.
Other comments? Mr. Girbauch.
My concern with anything that goes beyond this scope right now is Celine Township is not involved, and for us to start speculating on their properties, they were not excited about Biltmore coming in there and doing that aspect. So I think at this point, I'm more worried about this piece of property because this individual wants to bring it forward. I think we've got reasonable expectation that this could come forward. And whatever this study does present, it may show that we don't have to increase any kind of capacity on our plant because, one, Forcia isn't using it like it has, and Eden Soy is doing their own type of thing, American soy, I mean. So my concern here would be to move this forward, it already does have a water study in it as a second part of it, if they feel that they're comfortable with the initial part of it for the sewer. And I don't see where this would be anything that would prohibit us from the future doing a more comprehensive study, but I want it involved with the government agencies, not something we're doing behind their back, which that can be just like what Lodi Township got excited about when we attempted to try and fix that, concern with their annexation of property. So at this point, I think this is a good opportunity for us to get something done with that property, to expand the city. And Mr. Campbell has worked diligently on this to make sure that we're not the ones setting forth funds for something that may not eventually occur, because whatever comes out of this, it may be cost prohibitive or it may not happen. So I want to make sure that whoever's funding it, like any other kind of development opportunity, whatever, they're going to make a profit on this. This is part of their profit. They aren't required to make full profit. They're required, they can make whatever they want as a profit, but we don't need to be doing it and subsidizing it.
Mr. Roth, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I concur.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne, anything further?
Well, I certainly will vote in favor of moving this forward because, you know, it's better to do something than to do nothing. But I would prefer to move more quickly and to have a better understanding of the entire development area. Maybe we can get something without having a full-blown study, maybe just some back-of-the-envelope response. One thing we will have to know is when changes are made to utilities, somehow, sometimes they're lump sum. They might cost $6 million upfront. As a bond payout, it might cost $9 million by the time you pay off all of the payments. So you do have to, at some point, know what you're doing related to the development area because when it does occur, it's going to be a big jump. It's going to be a big investment.
Well, I guess I would say, we're straying a little bit off the topic of the motion at this point. You've brought up a number of important topics for future consideration, but if we could return to the present motion and the present memorandum of understanding, are there any further comments or discussion or questions about that? Okay. Then it's been properly moved by Mr. Girbauch and seconded by Mr. Rhodes to approve. All those?
Roth, just clarifying. Mr. Roth.
Sorry. What did I say?
Rhodes.
Sorry, Jim. To approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me gather my thoughts here for a moment. Okay. We move to item 14-240. This is CLG grant for Rentschler Farm. This will be, it's actually not in the form of a motion.
Can you answer? It has to be put in a particular way for the grant.
Okay. So the statement is that the Director of Public Works is authorized and directed to file an application for $33,000 for Rentschler Farm Condition Assessment Report and Salvage Barn Structural Repair Plans and Specifications, and that upon approval of the final application by the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, the city manager shall be authorized to sign the grant contract, any necessary amendments to the grant contract, other contract-related documents, and the required covenant easement. The City of Celine shall provide the matching funds in the amount of $22,000 for a total project cost of $55,000. The source of the matching funds shall be Capital Improvement Fund Line 101-900-977-035.
I'll move to authorize and direct the Director of Public Works and authorize the city manager to sign as presented in this statement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Roth, thank you. It's been moved by Mr. Girbauch, seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion? Mr. Fordis.
Thank you. In 2013, we applied for a certified local government grant rehabilitation funds to fund replacement of the big barn roof at Rentschler Farm, also the salvage barn roof, and perform some structural repairs within the salvage barn. We did not receive that grant. As grants go, it's quite a complex application packet, and there's a lot of very specific requirements in there. So given the short timeframe we had in their last application, there were a couple of those points that we missed. So with the help of the Celine Area Historical Society, have recruited an Eastern Michigan graduate student to help with this year's application, and she reviewed our past application and then had discussions with the state historic preservation office and determined that rather than reapply for those rehabilitation funds, that it would make more sense to apply for a planning grant. There are more planning funds available through this grant program than there are rehabilitation funds, so they're slightly easier to get. And they also help set you up for future rehabilitation grants. So this grant would do a thorough study of the farm, basically, and create a preservation plan. It would look at each of the structures, the physical challenges they're facing, and prioritize them. And it would also prepare specifications and plans for the structural repairs to the salvage barn. One of the rehabilitation grant requirements is that those specifications be prepared by, I forget exactly what the certification is, but a certain type of historical preservation professional. So in our last application, we didn't have that. So this would set us up for that, almost certain that the preservation plan will identify the salvage barn as the top priority in terms of preservation needs. So then we'll be set up for a future grant application to fund the rehabilitation. We did include in this year's budget matching funds to reapply for the rehabilitation grant. Now the match is much lower, so part of the motion, or part of the action tonight, is to reallocate those funds from a match for rehabilitation grant to a match for the planning grant. And another one of the requirements is that that very specific motion, that it needs to precisely say those things.
Are there questions for Mr. Fordis? Mr. Roth.
I'd like to make some clarifications in my own mind. This grant you're wished to apply for is going to cost us here $22,000.
Correct.
The overall cost of the grant is $55,000, and we're getting nothing but a plan for how to restore what needs to be restored. So we're getting nothing but a piece of paper and proposal for $55,000.
We're getting a thorough analysis of the preservation needs and a plan to preserve the farm.
It's very obvious what it is. Most any, our own city engineer and staff could pretty much pinpoint, along with the people of the Historical Society can pinpoint, what needs to be done. So I think that's kind of great expenditure. I'd rather see the money's put toward actual repair and bringing the building up to par, which the other grant that you said would do such if we get such granted. So to me, it's looking like a big expenditure just to know what to do with it. It's pretty obvious what to do with it.
To a certain amount, that's correct. But if we want to get the grant funding to do the actual physical repairs, we need to have those plans prepared in this manner.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the overall cost of repairing it would be?
Well, the previous grant project amount was right around $90,000, and that included the two roofs and the structural repairs.
And then what part of that $90,000 would be cost to the city?
40%.
40%. So you're looking at...
If we go through this same grant process.
So it's going to cost us $90,000 or so. It's going to cost the $55,000 or the $22,000 for our own. So we're getting up pretty high.
It's not insignificant money.
You're looking at it, not much more. We could have it done at our own expense and leave the grants out. And we'd have it done without having to wait.
Mr. Girbauch.
Is this, I mean, if we don't do this study or whatever, we'll not be eligible for pretty much any grants for anything on the farm, correct? In terms of this type of funding source from the state of Michigan?
This type of funding source, correct. And this is primarily federal money administered by the state. So basically, any federal historic preservation money would be ineligible for.
So what we're doing is basically the homework that we did for some other grant opportunities is that we've got the plan, that we look like we have our information, everything structured for what we believe needs to be repaired.
Right.
Convincing the grant agencies that we have this. So if we potentially want something to support the barns, the house, anything, this is the first step to make sure we've got our ducks in a row. Even though we may have experts that say stuff, we don't have that written down anywhere in a clear plan.
Right. It's very similar to our Parks Master Plan or our non-motorized transportation plan. Both of those have set us up for grants. There's certain DNR grants that you cannot get if you don't have a Parks Master Plan, and this funding is turning out to be very similar to that.
So the question is, could we do it cheaper with a different consultant and not have to go through this process? Is there an alternative to what we're doing here and using instead of having to go for the grants and all of that? Or is this cost of $57,000 or, what is it? $55,000?
A $22,000 match for a $55,000 project, yes.
I mean, it seems like a very significant study that's going to be undertaken, and I guess the question is, how did we get the estimate? Where did the $50,000? I just wonder where the $55,000 estimate came from.
That actually came, it was kind of a mix of two sources, from Shippo... That actually came, it was kind of a mix of two sources, from SHPO and then corroborated by a qualified consultant that would actually perform that type of work. So... And it is a significant investment of funds, but I think, long-term, we will see that money returned through this grant program.
How many hours? I mean, basically on a consultant, how many hours and what was kind of the scope of what he was going to do or she?
The number of hours estimated, I'm not certain, but it does cover every single structure at the farm. So we'll have that plan in place.
They'll do detailed drawings and so forth, or just assessments?
Well, the specifications for the structural repairs will be very detailed. That'll be a bid-ready document. The rest of it'll be, I don't think there'll be drawings. There'll be, you know, any necessary photographs, illustrations to document the condition and the problems that each structure has right now. But other than that set for the salvage barn, there won't be drawings and specifications for those. It'll be more of a list of priorities. You know, we need to fix this first, we need to fix that second.
The only other thing, when we initially applied for this grant, we had looked at, and remember, the whole package was even the moss aslim and some of that repairing the windows and stuff. I mean, do we have any intent to submit that grant at any point?
The, that was, it was actually, it was a separate application for the same grant and did not receive that one for similar reasons. So that project, I think we're going forward with that one without grant funding, because it's a smaller dollar amount.
It's too bad that we couldn't have included the depot in this, too, because the depot needs significant repairs, too, or starting to. And for that kind of dollar amount, I would hope that we could have snuck that building in, too.
It might be possible, but I'll have to take a look at that.
Is there a timeline on this?
On the grant application?
Yes.
Yes, the grant has to be applied for by the 19th.
The 19th?
Yes.
I just wanted you to go back to the drawing board to include the depot and also let us know who really is, who's charging $55,000? What we're really going to get out of it? I just, I'm a problem with that big chunk of money and not knowing what I'm going to get.
I'm not sure how you want that defined. I mean, you're getting this, you're getting a condition assessment report and plans and specifications for the salvage barn repairs.
But it's just a, I thought you're talking about all the buildings at the Rentschler Farm. If it's just for that one building, it's ridiculous.
The condition assessment report is for all of the buildings on the farmstead. The plans and specifications are just for the salvage barn.
So, just for more clarification, the bid-ready document you describes, there would be a bid-ready document for every building on the farmstead?
No, no.
No?
Just the salvage barn.
Just the salvage barn?
Yes.
So how far away is the product that we would get from the assessment from then, that next step? Or, okay, say, so say we're talking about the house. From this condition assessment report, is the, all of the information that's included there sufficient for the kind of grant application that we have not been able to submit successfully in the past without that document?
A rehabilitation grant for some as-yet-undefined repair on the house would require a set of plans and specifications. So there would be another, once we identify other issues, there would be additional planning that would need to be done in order to apply for a grant.
But without the condition assessment report, it doesn't, that second document you're describing is not sufficient?
Theoretically, the condition assessment report is, I think SHPO takes that as a sign of local investment in the property, that, you know, we care enough to invest money in creating the plan, the overall preservation plan, and then we apply for a specific grant to fix whatever's identified, or some collection of problems that are identified. And then that application would also require plans and specifications, which would require additional consultant, qualified consultant time.
And would this report also help the city and DPW in looking ahead and foreseeing possible issues as opposed to responding to things when they become emergencies? I mean, how does this help you in your planning process?
Yeah, certainly, it depends on what's identified. But I would anticipate that a number of the issues identified would be things that we can simply take care of in-house, and, you know, small problems before they become big problems, that type of thing. There's certainly, you know, I expect there'll be items in there that would definitely be beyond the scope of the DPW to repair, and those would be items that we would go with the consultant and attempt to get another grant to perform those repairs. But I think it will, it will give us kind of a guidebook on maintenance and simple repair items.
Right. Okay. I'm going to say that I will support this in part based on that aspect, that it gives, that it also gives the city a very useful tool, a long-term planning tool. Mr. Roth.
I would like to ask our attorney's opinion on this. To me, it appears that this Michigan State Housing Development Authority is kind of putting requirements in front of us that somebody, consultants, are lining their pockets with, or as to hedge on it, whether we're going to get grants or not. Am I seeing this correctly?
Well, I think that there are political issues, I think, that you're identifying, and you may view things in one way politically. On the other hand, there's the practical issue of this is the, you know, this is the avenue of funding that's been presented to you. So, you know, it's, I guess, in the bottom line, the kind of conclusion I have is that the one who has the money is the one who makes the rules, and if these are the rules, they may be politically somewhat distasteful, but you'll need to make a decision as a matter of policy as to whether or not stomaching some of that is worth it to get the ultimate kind of grant funding and support that you need for the overall vision for the property.
Then my understanding comes back. I can see the $55,000 cost if it's for all the buildings on the Rentschler Farm, but it appears to me that we want to do something to the house, we're going to have to do an additional study, going to be additional cost down the road. So I kind of think that's a heck of a lot of money to spend just on a study for a barn and getting nothing done.
The assessment study covers all the buildings on the farmstead?
That's for certain?
Yes.
Okay.
The plans and specifications are specific to the salvage barn, because that's the building that we've identified has a significant problem.
Do we have a breakout what the cost is for plans and specifications versus the overall study?
I do not have that with me.
Yeah, of the 90 or so thousand, whatever it was that you applied for to re-roof the barn and the salvage barn, and also do some structural repairs to the salvage barn. Of that, how much of that was actual repairs and how much of that was upfront engineering and overhead?
That, in that scope, that was all repairs. That was all contractor cost.
And did you have a barn rehab specialist or some expert look at this before you did? You applied?
We did, but they did not meet the standards of SHPO. So, you know, a very experienced person who's done multiple, multiple barn repairs and, you know, a qualified roofing company, but they don't meet the technical specifications of a qualified consultant in SHPO's view.
So we had probably the best person on site who technically did not meet the requirements.
Correct.
So if you just went back and took the work and the specifications and the problems and the issues that were listed out and showed that to somebody else, I don't see how that would take $55,000 if you just did the barn and the salvage barn, the main barn and the salvage barn.
It's not that. It's the whole assessment report in addition to the plans and specifications. And there's a process, and if we want to apply for this type of funding, this is the avenue we need to go down. If we do not want to apply for this type of funding, then we do not need to do this. But this gives us an opportunity to have future rehabilitations on the farmstead funded at 60%.
In the past few years of applicants to this MISHDA funding, what proportion of the applicants were fully funded, were, got funded? Was it a third, half? Do we know?
It's, it's, to apply for this funding, you have to be a certified local government, and there are only, I think, 20 in the state of Michigan. So it's, they're fairly decent odds. I don't know how many applicants versus awards, but each year, there are typically in the four to five grants funded range on the rehabilitation side, so...
And how many apply?
Well, only, there's only 20 that are eligible to apply, so I don't know how many actually sent in applications, but even at that, that's 25%, so that's not bad odds for a grant.
Other questions or comments? It's been moved by Mr. Girbach and seconded by Mr. Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion fails for lack of a majority. Okay, we come to the discussion portion of the agenda. First item, Commission Committee and Task Force Reports from Council Members.
Nope, planning didn't meet, so we have nothing.
Okay. Reports and other announcements.
I just got one, real quick one. In our packet this last week was about Lodi Township's planning commission is in the nose of intent to prepare a master plan amendment. As I voiced a little earlier, but my concerns is really addressing what Lodi is intending to do in terms of our borders and especially some of the properties that have yet to be annexed. I would like to see us working more towards somehow of fixing those islands, and I don't know what can be done as part of the master plan or whatever, but if we could have some kind of representation for the city or understanding what they're doing, because whatever they do will significantly impact our resources and everything on our borders, especially if we look to expand any kind of housing to the north.
I'd like to follow up on that. That's a point well taken. I do agree with that. In addition to that, our aquifer area is to the north. It's where we get our drinking water. Whatever you do to pollute that in the area from which our drinking water comes is important. And we need to stay in touch with our neighbor to see that things are compatible between us in terms of us getting the drinking water from the northerly direction. That's where our aquifer is.
Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Roth.
I'd like to announce that the Rentschler Farm will be having a Christmas celebration the next three weekends, the 6th, the 13th, the 14th, and the 20th during the regular hours from 11 to 3. The house is open. Come in, see, completely decorated, and encourage the public to take apart, take a time to visit what the city has for its museum.
Other announcements?
And whoever wants to remind that we have the decorating of the Christmas tree or holiday tree uptown on Thursday night.
7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. The parade on, well, back up, the tree lighting, actually, on Friday night at 7:00 PM, I believe, and then the parade at 5:30 on Saturday. So I hope to see everyone out there and support everybody. It looks like it's going to have a huge group of people. Even the Historical Society is going to have a float in it, so it should be interesting to see what everyone comes up with with the new theme.
Right. Any other announcements or reports? Mr. Pergoyd.
I have something other. I'd like to talk about the Rentschler Farm again for a minute. The reason I voted against this was that it seemed like too much, because when we were talking about our water and sewer system, half a dozen years ago, or maybe six or eight years ago, we had a good, fairly good handle on our master plan compared to our water and sewer system. Things change over time. If you do a study of every single thing at the Rentschler Farm, you do, you know, for what amount of money you might spend in 15 years, things might change. And it seems to me that if the scope were a bit more limited, that agenda item could come back on the next agenda. For example, instead of asking for $55,000 to do every single thing over there, if it were more narrowly limited to the main barn and the salvage barn and had a smaller scope, the total $55,000 might be less of a cost. It might be more manageable, and it might be in step with what we might want to do for a grant application for the next year. So I'm just throwing that out there, that if this has to be to MISHDA by the 19th, that we do have a meeting on the 15th, and that I believe you can take up an agenda item at the next meeting if it's not exactly the same topic. So narrowing the scope and doing it for a more manageable bite might work. Just a thought, just throwing it out there.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Rotem. And Jeff, you can probably speak better than I, but I believe that's not the case, that it's, that you can't pare down the scope.
A couple of challenges with that. You know, one, the application deadline on the 19th. Two, the amount of work that remains to be done on the grant. There still are multiple documents that need to be prepared and the scope written up, and part of that work has already been done, assuming this scope. There's just, there's a lot of lead time that goes into these grant applications, and I don't think it would be an attractive grant package if we narrowed it down, if we didn't include the entire National Register-listed site. And that, it just, to me, I don't think it would be worth the effort, because the number of staff hours that go into an application like this versus, you know, to do one building and then have to do that all again and recreate that when we come back for another grant, I just, I don't think there's that much return on it. And again, I don't think it would be an attractive grant.
We do, I will say, we do have the option at this meeting, I believe, under parliamentary procedure, I should know this better since I just had the class, to make a new motion and rescind the decision we've just made on 14-240. If there is any interest in doing that. If there is any interest in doing that.
Yeah, well, I'd be interested in doing that if I understood more about the chances of actually getting structural repair grants. So for the $90,000 that the city did not get, so we applied for $90,000 or we applied for some amount of money, how much money was available and how, how much was applied for that? How much did they, they rejected us? How many others do they reject? Is, are our chances good in that aspect? I, I want to know the next steps. If you put out money, is it good money being put out?
What's the annual budget or amounts that they award?
For structural? Just going off the top of my head, I, what I recall for, for the rehabilitation grants is they typically allocate somewhere half a million to 750,000. It depends on what the federal allocation is. It varies a little bit from year to year. But I think it's typically in that half million plus range for rehabilitation and then closer to a million in the planning funds.
And of the rehab, just the structural stuff, how many, what do they get in grant applications? Do they get 5 million or nine tenths of a million requested?
Well, there are, the eligible properties for rehabilitation grants, so it's limited to properties that are on the National Register and owned or sponsored by a certified local government. So you, that narrows the pool down pretty far. So it has to be one of these 20 or so local governments that have been certified by the state of Michigan. And the project has to be on a property that's listed on the National Register. So it's, it's much better odds than, than say, a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, you know, because all Act 51 agencies are eligible for that.
Is it like one out of two or?
I am not an odds maker, but you've got 20-ish entities that are eligible to apply, but only on properties that are listed in the National Register. So, and there's, you know, half a million dollars a year. So I can't say we do this grant and then in 2015, we get the rehabilitation funds. It might be 2016 or 17.
But, but when you applied, did you see how much dollar request, there was total for the three quarters of a million? Was it 1 million, 2 million, 10 million?
I found your question.
Well, if, let's say about two-thirds of a million is granted, what was a dollar total requested of the people applying?
I don't know that.
Oh.
So, so Mr. Burgoyne, just to clarify, if we came back to this question, the motion previously defeated, would you, might you consider supporting it?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. So the, the motion would be to, to review the previous motion with additional information?
I think you can, I think I can make a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne has moved to reconsider item 14-240. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Roth. Okay. Just now. Now, where are we? Okay. So now we're back on the original motion? No. We're voting on the motion to reconsider.
Correct.
Okay.
Tonight or?
Yes.
Two weeks.
No, right now.
Right now.
Well, the only gap in information we don't have is we don't know how many others are applying. We don't really know our odds on the rehab.
Okay. So we have a motion to reconsider. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
Just real quick. We might as well submit this. We don't have to accept the grant, but you might as well go in and see what we get. And if we determine that this isn't going to work, we can always use the $22,000 to repair something else. So at this point in time, we know we've got the $22,000 set there aside to do this. If we get the grant, that'll be great. We'll work out at that perspective. But we put a lot of effort into this. I'm, and I'm, I apologize for why we've gone through a lot of this, but it's true. $22,000 could potentially repair quite a few things, especially the roof or something out there. But we're not going to give any kind of structural repair out there. All we're doing is preparing for the future. So I'm going to, I'll support this tonight to move forward on here, and that's kind of the thing. But we really need to decide if we get the grant, if we're going to proceed with it at that point in time because I'd rather see the roof fixed if we're not going to get a grant for three to four years. More damage to the building could happen before we get this grant. So that's my concern on this.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne.
Yeah, I agree 100% with Mr. Girba. There's been a lot of work put into this. I didn't realize that my dissenting vote would kill the motion. I thought it was actually going to go through and I just, I wanted to show that it wasn't 100% secure. But at this point, I don't want to kill the effort. I want the effort to look at this, realistically look and let the council decide.
Any other discussion? Okay. It has been moved by Burgoyne and seconded by Roth to reconsider. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. We come to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and I am requesting again that any important information as far as monetary facts be put in record and on the agenda in the future. They also, there's, before you was an environmental commission. I was the only vote that allowed a quorum and I made a comment after the motion to be supplied. So I'm requesting that my concern on the median rain gardens be also included in the motion. I noticed that the Celine area schools are updating their emergency shelter plans district wide. Is Celine going to upgrade our, I'm wondering, does that mean Celine, like the Celine Mobile Home parks, will be able to also use the rec center in case of emergencies? I don't think we've ever stated where the emergency places are. I think it was here and maybe the fire department for the city of Celine. So I'm requesting also, I think it's a great idea that we have a emergency shelter plan for the city also. And maybe we can use the rec center. Thank you.
I've been informed by more expert opinion than the clerks in mine that our motion to reconsider item 14-420 only succeeded in putting it back on the table, or back on, sorry, off the table before us. So do we need to have it moved again?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girba to approve item 14-20. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Switz. Mr. Burgoyne.
I have an additional discussion item, which is, we had REUs in the contract for a water and sewer. And I, for one, wanted an indication of what an REU is, how much that means for sewer and how much that means for water. And also, what is the definition? I believe an REU is what an average residential unit consumes. But, you know, perhaps at the next meeting, we could, you know, maybe staff could just give us a response on this. I did send email questions on this.
Mr. Campbell.
Sure. I can provide a response right now if you'd like.
Oh, that's fine.
Of course, REU is an acronym for residential equivalent unit. One REU represents the wastewater generated from one single family home. Non-single family residential customers will use a different amount of wastewater. There are tables that can be used to estimate a number of REUs other land uses will demand for planning purposes. One REU represents approximately 270 gallons a day, which is 100 gallons per person a day times 2.7 persons per home. Again, that's an average number, obviously.
So is it water or sewer?
That's 270 gallons of water. Of, that's the average use.
Is the sewer amount indicated to be the same or different?
It would be similar. Obviously, a lot of that is, for instance, showers, flushing the toilets, those types of things. So, but-
Not included, of course, would be lawn sprinklers would not go back into the sewer. The study we were having was not water, it was, was sewer. So-
Correct.
I was thinking of REU relating to that.
Yeah. Well, I guess it, this would, I think this is actually, thank you for correcting me. I think that is, the 270 gallons would be for the, for the wastewater.
Oh, for the wastewater.
Is there any further public comment? All other, any?
I can't let this go by without saying something. Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett. I, I think we're overthinking the emergency shelter idea. If you see all the cars outside the high school, if they had to close the high school, all those kids would get in their cars and go home. They would not go to the rec center or, or DeBreyer Wood or somewhere. The Harvest students, at least the parents would know what the designated emergency shelter is. It's the rec center. That way, there's no question if every parent is notified, that if the school is closed, they would be notified of that. They'd go to the rec center and that's where you pick up their kid. Or if they get enough notice, the parents will come and get their kids and take them home. So it's not a big deal. And likewise, the people at the rec center would get in their cars and go home. More than likely, very few of them would go to, to the schools for emergency shelter. And I'm sure as far as citizens of town, all of the churches, the city hall, all public buildings would be available for them if necessary. So let's not overthink these things. Most people would have transportation to get home and wouldn't go, but at least the parents would know where their kid is.
Thank you, Mrs. Laronas. Any other public comment? Any other business to come before this body? Our upcoming meetings are many. The first one, to which all members of the public are encouraged to attend, is on Wednesday, December 3rd, that's this Wednesday, Town Hall Meeting at Liberty School Cafeteria at 6:00 PM related to five-year strategic planning. Then on December 15th, Work Meeting of the City Council at 6:30 PM, regular meeting at 7:30 PM. On December 16th, Michigan Avenue Makeover Public Meeting at 6:30 PM at Liberty School Cafeteria. Once again, everyone is invited to attend and encouraged. Important footnote to the December 10th meeting, pizza will be provided, December 3rd, sorry. Town Hall, five-year strategic plan meeting, food will be served. January 5th, Regular Meeting of the City Council at 7:30 PM. And on January 6th, Strategic Planning Wrap-Up for City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. Would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:23 PM. So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Girba, seconded by Mr. Burgoyne to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.